I'll read the notice into the record and then you can go from there. Tom, Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority for the town of Yarmouth has received an application from Mary Vilbon on behalf of the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce for a special wine and malt license for miniature golf tournament to be held at Skull Island Adventure Golf and Sports World, 934 Route 28 South Yarmouth, on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2019, with a rain date of October 3rd. The hours of service will be 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. Hearing will be held on Tuesday, August 27th, 2019, in the hearing room at Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth. The selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 p.m. Written comments will be accepted in the selectmen's office until 4:30 on Friday, August 23rd, 2019. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. Did we receive any correspondence on this at all? None? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom Niguel, President of the Chamber of Commerce, along with...
Jennifer Warner from the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce.
Our Communications Director. Mary Vilbon was... She couldn't make it tonight and asked me to stand in. She's very apologetic she couldn't make it, but, you know, circumstances do happen. So, we're going to... As you know, the Chamber of Commerce has been working with the town of Yarmouth since 1961 in preserving our community, for our citizens, our business people, and our visitors. And we are taking a different direction this year for a miniature golf scuttlebutt tournament. And we'd like to have a one-day liquor license for just some malt and some wine. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, if there's any questions?
Okay. Does anybody from the public want to be heard on this, either in favor or in opposition to it? Seeing none? Anyone in the board have any questions?
Make a motion, close the public hearing.
We have a second on that?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Make a motion, approve the application as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, approve as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, you're all set. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and see you all there.
Good luck.
Okay. Are we ready for...
Yes.
...the proclamation? Where is Amy?
Carl, are you here yet?
Amy, do you want to come forward, please? Why don't you come... I'm going to read this proclamation, which is going to be presented on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and is signed by each individual member of the Board. And after that, Chris Greeley has asked to have a few minutes to add her comments with respect to your service on the Yarmouth Substance Abuse Committee. So, this will be in two parts. The first is the proclamation that's presented on behalf of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Yarmouth. Whereas Amy Von Hohn served professionally and with dedication in the public and environmental areas as the Assistant Director of the Health Department for the town of Yarmouth for 29 years. And whereas Amy Von Hohn is recognized statewide as a leader in the Title V Septic Systems by other Cape Town health departments, the County Health Department, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, and engineers and installers of septic systems. And whereas Amy Von Hohn has also served Yarmouth as a member of the Yarmouth Substance Awareness Committee and the County Rabies Task Force, where she received a national award for her efforts, as well as receiving the Chamber of Commerce's 2005 Public Service Award for her work on rabies education. And whereas, over the course of her service to the town, she routinely assisted and supported a wide range of health department initiatives, served as a mentor to the staff, and provided technical assistance to the Board of Health and other town departments, and was extremely generous with her time. Therefore, we do hereby officially recognize and publicly say thank you to Amy Von Hohn for her dedication to the town of Yarmouth, her profession, and the environment, and further wish her great success in the future on the 16th day of August, 2019. Signed, Michael Stone, Norman Holcomb, Tracy Post, Eric Tully, and Mark Forst. I'll now recognize Chris Greeley.
I'm Christine Greeley. I'm Chairman of the Yarmouth Substance Awareness Committee. I had not been aware that we hired kindergarten students when I heard 29 years of service. But be that as it may, I'm here today on behalf of the committee to commend and to also proclaim the kinds of things that Amy has done on behalf of this community, particularly in the issues of substance awareness. This has been very crucial to the health of our children, our families in this community. She's been a very, very active participant, member of the committee, for many, many years. She always attends meetings. And besides that, one of the things that I think is very significant is she's always involved herself in helping to plan for events and things we're going to have, but then she also follows through with a commitment to those events. And so, you will find her... I have pictures of her on a Saturday putting labels for sticker shock on bags, working with students from this community and other professionals. You will find her having done both setup, cleanup, and chaperoning for the luau, and also doing the same kinds of work on the night that we did, and that was a Friday night that she gave up. And on Wednesday, a week later, she's there helping with the Cape Cod family dinner discussion. And so, she goes well above and beyond in her commitment, and certainly well beyond that 8:30 to 4:30 kinds of commitment that she had here in the town. So, I... We will never know how many lives you've impacted in the community by your work, and we certainly wish you the absolute very, very best, and I have a small gift from the committee to you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you so much. This means more than you realize. This town of Yarmouth is a very, very special place to me. I grew up here. I was educated in the school system. I've spent most of my working career here, so a lot of special people that I will always remember and be grateful for their support, and, you know, I don't know what else to say.
Bruce, did you want to...
Yes, Bruce, go ahead.
If... I'd like to just also say a few words.
Sure.
She's... Amy's worked in the Health Department for, as you mentioned, 29 years, and we know how expatitionish she is, but she's also been very professional over the years, very compassionate working with people in the community, which was just outstanding. There's... We have several people here that she's worked with, from Board of Health members to Health Director in the Town of Sandwiches here tonight. We have local engineers that are here tonight that work closely with her in the Department. We have septic installers here tonight that she's worked with over the years, and just a cross-section of the community that has shown up. And it's... We've heard that from quite a few other people that weren't able to make it tonight because of commitments, but it's been a lot... A lot of emotions the last couple of weeks while we've missed her and people in the community miss her. It's interesting, as we drive around in your car, we're still getting people waving at you. They don't know that, you know, you're not going around, so it's been a pleasure to have her with at the Department. We've been... The town's been very lucky. We've also acknowledged her within the Health Department. We've presented her with a plaque of appreciation also. So, it's been a terrific number of years she's served the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Okay, the next item is the YPD parking regulations amendment. Who's going to take that?
Sue Magnuson should be here today.
Phil's going to have that taken?
Are we going to do the school agreement vote first?
We can do that if you want. No, Phil's here.
No, it's on the agenda.
Is it first? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Phil, just give us one second. This will be quick. The DY agreement vote, everybody has the language in front of them.
Yes. It's... I want to make a motion.
Okay.
And all it does is it puts into legal lease the items that were agreed upon in the memorandum of understanding between the two towns.
I'm going to make a motion that we place and support the proposed special town meeting article on the regional fall agreement, which is fall 2019, which will be October 29th, 2019, to see if the town will vote consistent with the agreement between the towns of Dennis and Yarmouth establishing a regional school... Establishing a regional school district as most recently amended spring of 2013 to accept further amendments to Section 4B and 4D of said agreement, which have been initiated and approved by a vote of the regional school district on August 26th, 2019, which would allocate the percentage split of the district operating capital costs as follows. Section 4D shall be replaced in its entirety as follows. With respect to the percentage split of the district's operating costs by and between Dennis and Yarmouth, 1, the split for operating costs for the Commonwealth's designated minimum required contribution shall be in accordance with the statutory formula under Mass. General Law Chapter 70, and 2, the split for all operational costs above the minimum required contribution shall be based upon the percentage share of the five-year rolling average of foundation enrollment, beginning with fiscal year 2016, for each town. For the purposes of this agreement, the term "foundation enrollment" shall be in substantial conformance with the definition utilized by the Commonwealth's Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, otherwise known as DESE. Section 4B shall be amended by adding the following subsection, 4, as follows. With respect to the percentage split of the district's capital costs and expenditures, 1, Yarmouth shall bear 65% and Dennis shall bear 35% of the capital cost split for the building project to replace the Matikes and Wixson School to be located on Station Avenue, and 2, the capital cost split for all other capital expenses and projects shall be in accordance with the current regional agreement, as may be otherwise amended, or to take any action relative thereto.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This language has already been approved by the town of Dennis and the school committee, so once we approve it, it'll be uniform language that will appear on both ballots in the fall meeting.
I have a question.
Warrants, I'm sorry, both warrants for the two fall town meetings. Yes? What's your question?
The question, and I guess I checked back on the original memorandum of understanding, and it's consistent with the language here. But my recollection of our discussions was that we also agreed that for the future, any expenditures with regard to Matikes or Wixson or any other school located within a single town would be borne by that town. Now, this doesn't really address that. What it does do is it says that capital cost split for other capital expenses and projects shall be in accordance with the current regional agreement. So, let's say Station Avenue does not get built. What this binds us to is the old agreement with regard to any renovation or replacement of Matikes or Wixson.
I don't remember that in the memorandum. Do you have a copy of the memorandum? I don't...
The memorandum did not address that.
Oh.
I think it's fair to say it was discussed that there were a number of other, what I'd call, updates needed of the agreement, that the committee didn't think that the DESE could get that all reviewed ahead of time with all the things that were done, but certainly that was part of the further explanations that should take on between the two towns going forward, and then try to get all of that changes to get through the DESE process, and then put it in front of a future town meeting.
So, last night at the school committee, they talked that this wasn't the end still. I mean, that they were going to go back to work on further amendments.
But is your question, if this school doesn't get built...
What then?
You go back to the old agreement. That's what happens then.
I don't remember that being part of the memorandum, that the... Because I wasn't involved in the negotiation, so I only know what I read, and this was consistent with what I read in the agreement.
No, I think it's fair to say that the agreement was set such that it addressed the initial few years of operating costs and the capital split specific to this project, and actually, thanks to Selectmen Post, we got definitive language added to this that made sure it was the Matikes and Wixson School at the Station Avenue site, so that agreement, 6535, was for that project specifically.
Correct.
Yes. But anything...
That doesn't answer the question.
If it doesn't get built, then I would say that it would... This is off the table, and it reverts to the regular agreement.
Yeah, it would.
Yeah.
You know, I guess I'm... I guess I'm disappointed that the... Because I recall the specific discussion in our negotiation meetings and that the school committee led, and that that was... You know, I remember Jim Plath talking about that. I remember the discussions in the agreement on that issue. And I guess I miss the fact that it was not in... Inserted into the memorandum of understanding. And I'm wondering, you know, and I guess that... I am concerned that, you know, this agreement does not address that. So, we're bound to... Let's say that the school committee just says, "Well, we're going to abandon Matikes, and we're going to build a addition to Wixson." So, are we... Where do we stand at that point? Are we bound to pay 2/3 of Wixson because we've got 2/3 of the students there?
Well, first of all, I don't think the school committee has come this far to do something like that. But secondly, in the world of pure, I guess, theoretical creatures, yeah, if that were to happen, then you revert to the old agreement. The new school gets built. The question is whether it gets funded under this language if it passes at both town meetings, or if it doesn't, then it reverts to the old agreement. That's it. There's no third door.
At this point. But hopefully that that language would be put into, I mean, or language whatever is agreed upon will be put into further amendments.
I don't know what specific language Norm's referencing, but...
Well, what he's saying is, so say, for instance, the lawsuit continues, and the money from the DESE goes away.
Okay.
Even if both towns pass this agreement, that school project doesn't come to fruition. They choose to do something else.
Okay, then you're back to the beginning.
Correct.
You're back to grounds... You're back to the very point of beginning, where you would be if... If the regional school wasn't proposed, and you were talking about a renovation to Matikes, you'd be exactly in the same position that you'd be in.
Right.
Back to square one.
I agree, but I also agree with his point that it's something that we need to work on for the future, because that was the question when we started, was who's responsible for the school? Who's responsible for funding the schools that belong to the towns? So, it is worthy of further discussion to say, if we're not going to do this joint project, then we go back to each town, funding its own school projects.
Yeah.
I could be wrong, but I don't remember... I don't even remember reaching that point of what if this school doesn't get built. I thought the building of the school was a given, that it was going to happen, that there was a memorandum of understanding that was geared around that joint school being built. And that was pretty much the end of it. I don't think the... I don't think there was these contingencies addressing what would happen if, for any reason, the school failed.
Well, well, but...
To be built.
But there was a very significant discussion previously, as well as during the meetings that we had with the subcommittee from the school, that if expenditures were planned out for Matikes, that those would be at Yarmouth's expense, and if expenditures were planned out for Wixson, it would be at Dennis's expense. So, just turning the tables and looking at the opposite situation, that Station Avenue does not get built, and then the school committee says, "All right, well, obviously, we've got to do a major renovation of Matikes." Well, under the current agreement, Dennis is responsible for at least 29% of that, and there had been substantial resistance in Dennis to doing that at some point, in having to fund any expenditure for schools that are located solely in Yarmouth.
Okay.
So, I think it was in... At Dennis's insistence in that that portion of the agreement, or that that language be inserted.
Dennis voted unanimously, well, four of them, to support this article last night.
Right. I don't know whether there was any discussion of that.
There isn't. I don't think that this... I think this is more of a short-term. We're trying to get accomplished what we need to get accomplished, but it's not the end of the road, so.
Yeah. I think to answer your question, Norm, if that were to materialize, your options would be either to just go forward and do the renovation based on the current agreement and the current split under the agreement, which would not be based on foundation enrollment, would be based on the student population as of the previous October. Or you could go to Dennis and try to amend the agreement so that each town would be responsible for the buildings within its own borders, which was the case historically, except for the high school. You just go back to that, I suppose. But in the absence of that, the default provision is the regional agreement.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, well, I hope that that gets addressed by the subcommittee as part of its work to further amend the language of the regional agreement.
I mean, I'm assuming that if this new school gets built, those buildings will probably get decommissioned and be used for some other purpose, and it won't be an issue.
Yeah.
Can we call the question?
Aye. We have a vote, motion, and a second, right?
Right.
Yep. We're voting on what's in front of us.
Right. That's all we can do, is vote on this. And if you don't vote on this, then you accept the... What's in the regional agreement, so.
And that's a good point, because I would really like to vote against this, but...
You can't.
It's pointless.
You really can't. So, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. YPD parking regs. Phil, you ready on that one?
Yes. Here's a slight... Edit to those that came to me today. It's nothing of form or substance. It's more just the header language. So, this is... Pass it on to you now, the edited version right here. It's only the very top. I want to just thank Phil and Dave for the work that they've done on this to get to this point. I think I emailed that you guys late in the day, but that's all that Jay staff came up with.
What's this?
These are the regulations. Just wait a minute, there's two things.
This is this, so that goes away.
It replaces the last two pieces of paper that are in your packet. They were just at the very top, some of the ways in which the state law was...
References to the statute, changes 28 to 28 and 1/2.
Do these become effective as soon as we vote on them? They become... When do these become effective if we take action? Is it immediately?
I would assume it's immediate because you're the body.
Make a motion, we support the new regulations or the proposed regulations for the updated parking... Yarmouth parking regulations as presented.
I'll second it.
Do you want to run through this before?
Sure. This is actually the culmination of a project that I started on about a year and a half ago, when Phil Garday called me and asked me, "What's the legal basis for our parking tickets?" And after doing quite a bit of research, we didn't find very much. And then the chief asked me to look at the ticket, to redesign the ticket. So, I ended up, I spoke to Pat Armstrong and worked with Dave Carlson, and many of the items in the old tickets don't even meet the state standards. It's a state standard for handicap parking, parking in a bus zone. So, we're going to bring our regulations up to the state standard. The main thing that we changed is to increase the parking fine in beach areas to $35.
Should be more than that.
Because the daily fee is $20. It's no deterrent to have a ticket that's $20. So, we've defined a beach parking area, which is the streets that are down near the beach, South Shore Drive, some of the side streets, and all the intersecting streets within 100 feet, and all ways to water, beach accessways, et cetera. Also, for illegal parking within the beaches themselves, the fine will be $35. Again, we've brought unauthorized use of handicaps based up to $100, obstruction of handicaps based up to $100. That's a state minimum. Again, the fines in the beach parking lot are $35. Beach access area fines for parking in a prohibited area, blocking a driveway, leaving less than a 10-foot-wide lane in both directions, parking within 20 feet of an intersection, parking within a restricted or prohibited area, parking on a sidewalk, and parking within 10 feet of a hydrant. Those would be $35, only within the beach access area. The remainder of the fines, which is 13 under Paragraph 5, there are 13 subjects in there, this is the same as the state fines set by state regulation for state highways. These are the same fines that we've been collecting all along. Chief Frederickson did not feel that it was necessary to increase those fines, because they provide an adequate deterrent when we get parking in neighborhoods or whatever. A $20 fine seems to be enough. And we're not looking at this as a fundraiser, but as a reasonable parking scheme to help to address some of the problems we have, and particularly the problems we had this summer.
Okay. So, if somebody wants to contest a fine, what's the process?
Well, the first paragraph, which I neglected to mention, is to formally appoint the chief as the parking clerk. We assumed that it might have been done sometime in the past, but we couldn't document it. We will continue to collect our fines through the Plymouth Parking Clerk. Most of the towns use them. They process the fines for us. If somebody wants to contest a fine, the way it works now, to contest a ticket, they come to the station, and they talk to Colleen Nixon, who actually processes the tickets. Once the chief is designated properly, he can assign anybody he wants to be a park... Be the parking clerk to hear parking appeals. In my paperwork, I was just looking over a memo that we got from Colleen in late 2017, early 2018, that no one has actually ever showed up for the hearing to contest a parking ticket. So, it's... You know, we need to... hearing to contest a parking ticket. So it's, you know, we need to have a procedure in place, but it's not a common occurrence.
The only thing from a procedural point of view, and I hear what you're saying, that nobody has shown up, but generally, you don't have the same agency that gives you the ticket serve as the appeal. Because there's a question whether you have a meaningful appeal at that point. I was just wondering if you could have, like, an appeal to the town clerk or somebody like that.
We certainly could.
It's only you're probably not going to get that many.
No, but there are certainly state agencies where you appeal to the agency that denied your request or made the ruling.
But to Sluckman Stone's point, there are, in other communities, there would be like a licensing clerk. They would hear not only these cases with parking, but also violations of the fire code related to overcrowding and whatnot. So there's a way to go about it. Jay's team didn't flag that as a problem as an administrative hearing?
But the chief could appoint anybody.
He can appoint anybody, that's correct.
He could appoint an alternate if somebody didn't feel that they were getting a fair appeal.
We could certainly explore an alternate such as the town clerk in absence of the chief, you know, or if you felt like that would be something that would seem to be more appropriate.
A chief could still, I don't know.
You could still appoint that person.
Yeah. Does it say that?
Yeah, his designee.
He could appoint.
Yes.
It should say and/or.
Well, I guess, I guess my question is, is the parking clerk the person that's going to be collecting the fines? Or is the parking clerk going to be the person who's going to be hearing appeals?
The parking clerk, I believe, has been assisted process, the whole process.
The way that your article's written, though, it says that the chief of police or his designee is hereby appointed. It should say and/or. He's not going to give his authority to somebody else solely.
Well, you know, I suppose it could say that. My thought was that the chief of police, the chief of police is in charge of many things, which he delegates. He doesn't delegate them and retain them. He delegates.
No, I don't have any problem with that, that part of it. But I do, I am a little bit apprehensive, and not with respect to our chief, or just the process in general. I mean, if somebody's appealing the conduct of somebody else, I have a problem with the appeal being to the same person, basically, or the same, you know, the same group of people.
That's how it is now, though, right?
If you get a speeding ticket, you don't appeal it to the police. You appeal it to the clerk of the courts. Somebody independent's going to take a look at it. You need that independent perspective, I think, to guarantee fairness to the process.
I mean, if you feel it appropriate, could you amend it at this hearing, just to say appeals to the town clerk?
Yeah, I think so.
I don't know how much he'll welcome that.
Yeah.
Well, there won't, I don't, you know, I don't think there's going to be a lot of appeals, but.
I think providing for due process is important, and giving people an opportunity outside of the department that is actually preparing a ticket. I mean, I just think that that's really important. I also have another question here. I, you know, very honestly, I thought that this was going to address the Center Street and Grays Beach parking situation.
We're working on that, Sluckman.
Well, why couldn't we simply amend this to include where in paragraph four, where it says the following named roads, and add the easterly side of Center Street from Grays Beach to the intersection with Alm's Road.
You certainly could do that with a motion.
And Summer Street, too. It says, I mean, it says all beaches, town beaches.
I mean, it says all beaches, ways to water, boat launching areas, and accessways. So I think once you get into the area of the beach, it would be covered. It probably wouldn't cover Center Street, which you get distance from the beach. I would say, when you get to the beach property, to the picnic grounds, I would say that would be covered by this. If you want to go further up Center Street, then you want to have your.
Well, I think it needs to be very specific. You know, the residents certainly in Homer's Dock and the areas leading to the beach are really raising a ruckus about what is happening there on the way to the beach.
I would say that that's outside of the beach. This is, this is parking regulations for the beaches, correct? Or just in general? So every street where you have parking, no parking signs, we'd have to list on here. I mean, it says.
The parking rules apply to all streets in town.
Yeah.
The $35 fine only applies to specified areas. It didn't come to mind for Grays Beach, because we don't charge for Grays Beach. So you don't need the increased fine to have a deterrent for bad parking. But it certainly, under the general language, park, illegal parking within the beach parking lot, at the beach, at the ramp, and at the way to the beach, however you wanted to define that, would be covered by the $35 fine. The rest of Center Street would be covered by the $20 fine.
Well, I think the, in this, in paragraph four, we define specifically Seagull Beach Road, South Shore Drive, Juden Way, Beechwood Road. And so by inference, then, we do not include Center Street.
Well, not within the $35 fine. But there's three, on paragraph four, there's three clauses. The first is all town beaches, ways to water, and boat launching ramps, including accessways and driveways leading to said beaches, ways to water, and boat launching ramps. That's one category. The second category are the named roads, which are not beach areas of boat launching ramps. And that's Seagull Beach, South Shore Drive, Beechwood Road, and some of the other areas down there. That is for the $35 fine. Paragraph five establishes parking fines, which are the same as they are today, for all of the remainder of the roads in town.
I don't understand where this would make parking on the easterly side of Center Street illegal and subject to a fine.
Well, if it obstructed the road so that it was less than 10 feet wide in each direction, it would be a $20 fine.
I think what Norm was trying to do is achieve a blanket ban on parking on the east side of Center Street.
That's right.
Which I agree with.
The sidewalk was just.
Oh, okay. Well, then the board could do that. But that's not a parking regulation. That's a parking ban.
Well, all we have to do is post it as no parking, and then they'll be subject to the fine.
Can it be included in this?
I don't see any harm in it. I mean, there are, back in 2006, I think, the board passed some specific regulations for specific areas, for example, Summer Street.
Right.
By the beach. And, you know, that's not within the parking fine scheme. Certainly the board can do that.
Do we know if we have posted no parking signs down there now?
We do not.
On Summer Street?
Oh, Summer Street?
On Summer Street, I know they already have the no parking.
They are not on, no, they're not on Center Street.
So that's a separate issue that we can, we could address.
Well, I mean, once you post it, and then it would be parking in a prohibited area, it would be either a $20 fine or a $35 fine, depending on where it is.
Well, I think we should add it to paragraph four, section two, make it subject to a $35 fine and post it.
I agree. And I'd like to make that motion.
That would be on both sides of the road, though.
No, just on the east side. And I would like to take it from the Bass Hole parking lot back to Homer's Dock.
I'm fine with that. Yep.
Okay. So then what you'd have is you'd have, people parked there afterwards, posted. Then it would be parking in a prohibited posted area within the defined beach area. It would be a $35 fine.
Correct.
Just take a vote on the motion, and we can do that. We'll edit.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so what would you be doing, putting that in as number three, Phil, and then changing three to four?
No, I think you'd add that to the list of roads.
Right.
Right, within clause two.
The named roads.
After Beechwood Road, it'd just say Center Street to Homer's Dock Road.
Okay, so it'd be added here, okay.
East side of Center Street.
East side of Center Street from the beach area parking lot to.
Well, let me suggest, if you want to make that a $35 fine, why not make illegal parking anywhere on that section of Center Street a $35 fine?
Because the.
A bit of a $35 fine on one side of the street, and a $20 fine on the other side of the street.
Well, except for Phil, so there's parking that's still okay on the other side. The problem is, we installed the soft shoulder work that was done there, and we're trying to keep cars off the soft shoulders. So that's, so that's the reason for just banning it on that side?
If somebody can park legally on the other side, there'd be no fine.
That's correct.
So therefore, there's no need to put a line down the middle of the road. This is, the $35 is only for illegal parking. If they're legal on the other side, that's fine. If they park in a prohibited area, that's $35. But I think it makes sense, if you're going to make that a $35 zone, make the whole street a $35 zone, not just one side.
I think, first things first, you know, to me, I understand, but if we end up trying to do that, people will be parked on Alm's Way as opposed to Center Street. I think if we drive people away from the beach, then we're going to create a mess that we would never have anticipated.
Fact is, there's not enough parking there. So you can't take it all away.
Of course not. And all I'm saying is that illegal parking on either side of the street is still going to draw a fine. Legal parking on, is it the west side? That's not going to draw a fine. So we're not going to drive people away from there by including it. If it's legal, they're not going to get fined.
Well, you just said make it illegal on both sides.
No, I didn't, sir. I said raise the fine for illegal parking on the whole street to $35.
Illegal.
Illegal parking. Legal parking, no fine.
So there would be legal parking on the west side, subject to a $35 fine if you were illegally parked on the west side. And there would be no parking, period, on the east side. Any parking would be subject to a $35 fine on that side.
Again, this regulation is not a parking ban. That's a separate function. This just establishes the fines for parking violations.
Okay, so it was from the easterly side of Center Street, from where to where, Norm, on your amendment?
From the parking area at Bass Hole or Grays Beach to the intersection with Homer's Dock. Is it Homer's Dock Road?
Yes.
Yeah.
Easterly side.
On the easterly side, right. It's important that that be designated.
Okay, you got that, Phil?
Two thousand twenty ticket books.
So.
Yes.
Which are expensive.
Yes, they are.
I think we need to make sure we educate people of the change in some manner first.
The signs will do that. Are we voting to put signs up there in addition to this?
We need to do something instead of just, I mean.
No, we shouldn't, we shouldn't do that. We shouldn't start ticketing people until we've got signs up. I mean, that, you know, I think it's important to get that across to the, to the department. And, you know, I think that's up to our town administrator and the DPW to get those signs in place.
While we were talking, I had a chance to look at the statute defining the duties of the parking clerk, if you'd be interested in that. "The parking clerk shall report to the council or alderman or selectmen of a town, and shall supervise and coordinate the processing of parking notices in such city or town," to me, which would include appeals. So the chief can appoint someone and supervise that situation. And again, these are parking tickets. It's not like a motor vehicle ticket. They're quite a minor violation. But if you want to put something, put something in about a different process, that would be, that would be fine.
Well, personally, I would like to see, I mean, I would like to see a separate agency, separate authority determine any appeals of the conduct of somebody else. Otherwise, I'm not sure you have a meaningful appeal.
I agree with that. I think it's a matter of perception as well.
Me, too.
Yeah.
So if we could name the town clerk as person you would go to for any appeal.
I'll make that motion.
And then add the language under for.
Second.
Number two, to include the easterly side of Center Street, from the parking area at Grays Beach to the intersection with Homer's Dock Road, those two amendments. Other than that, it seems that the board is supportive of these regulations. So can I have a motion to accept the proposed revision to these parking regulations with those two changes?
Submove.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. No, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your hard work on this.
We go order some tickets now.
Yeah, we'll get the tickets. All right, good. So that brings us to wastewater update.
The next topic was, obviously, we're getting close to special town meeting, and there's some developments that you should be aware of. And also, we finally set a date for the tri-town meeting, and I capsulated that in the memo. I think it's fair to say that there's still, at this date, some uncertainty about the special legislation getting through the Senate at this point. It's been passed through the House. It's in the Senate. We're trying to find a scheduling date in Boston for that, but nobody, obviously, it's very difficult to nail that down with the different committee chairman that have to be done. That being said, after that step, it'd go to the governor's desk. So as we are here tonight, I don't have any degree of certainty that the special legislation that was, that we were kind of planning on for an article for special town meeting will get over the finish line. That being said, the other issue came up with one of the towns, that town being Harwich, that they may not be as far along internally amongst the town folks as it relates on this topic. They've been, most of their energy has been set on the construction projects associated with their Chatham interconnection, and they have not really had an opportunity to delve deeply into what the DHY agreement means for that town. So there was some concern there. Their water advisory committee, if you will, has been disbanded, so they don't even have that group anymore. And so they were concerned that the advocacy needed to handle that special article would, may not be available in town. Additionally, at the very late hour, as mentioned in the memo, there was some additional flows per day that came out of Yarmouth. It's, I think, in the magnitude of about 230,000 gallons per day. On top of that, based on projects that have come in on contract in 2019, CDM Smith thought a inflationary factor of 10% projecting out to 2022 should be added into the cost equations that you've seen prior. So that essentially upset our cost recovery conversations we've been having with you as it relates, and we're short there maybe by $113 million, maybe, delta. So there's a, it went from about $112 million on our side to roughly $126 million, I think. So there's a, it went from about 112 million on our side to roughly 126 million, I think. So these are not good developments to occur so late in the game as it relates to trying to go out into the public and say, this is what this relationship will do and this is what it'll cost. That coupled with our own uncertainty as it relates to the short-term rental tax. The Cape Cod Water Protection Trust has just only had a couple of meetings, so we don't even know what the cost sharing or participation formula there would be. So generally, my position has been, and we've talked to our own individual team, that we have a great degree of uncertainty on this topic that's recently occurred. Now, that being said, part of the strategy for cost recovery also included, potentially on our end of it, the idea that we would take the community preservation legislation and do a cost share with them, one and a half, one and a half. So with that in mind, we're asking the CPC to come in front of the board and have a joint meeting on September 10th. Now, whether or not we can come to agreement relatively soon on that conversation, that's still a conversation that the two bodies need to have as it relates to being part of the cost recovery formula. So where does that leave us for the special town meeting article? I have to put something in front of you to take a vote. I believe it's by September 19th or 24th. We were looking to finalize the warrant. It's not, I don't think it's necessarily on your projection agenda. It was, we were discussing this on last Friday. So, you know, the 24th is, you know, we have to nail all this stuff down by the 24th to even have a chance. So it may be too much.
We haven't even had a chance to see it here.
That's correct. That's right. That's why we're trying to get it into you with the potential idea that we could have a workshop, a wastewater workshop with the rack on September 17th. Right now, that's initially penciled in as approved the special town meeting warrant, but we know we can push that back by about a week. And I was also, I also wanted to make sure that you had enough opportunity to get briefed on the different parts of DHY going into the 19th, so that information didn't come to you cold either. So between memos and meetings, we were hoping to bring you up to speed over the next couple of weeks on those topics. And this was the start of it.
So what would the article itself?
The article would be on the agreement.
Yeah, on the DHY agreement.
Yeah.
So...
But you don't have, you can't vote the agreement unless the legislation gets passed and the governor signs the entity that creates the thing.
I understand.
Yeah, so that's where we're at.
But, but let's say this whole thing fell apart. Having voted at town meeting would not preclude us from going it on our own.
No, that's true. So to Rich's fine leadership on this topic, we've been having a Yarmouth go-it-alone strategy parallel developed at the same time. That's correct. Yeah. And Rich can speak more on that particular topic as it relates to... Because we didn't want to be caught into this backed into a corner situation without option B, so...
If Harwich doesn't seem to be ready to go forward on this, how can we...
Well, that's a good point, because Harwich doesn't have a history of a fall town meeting, so they were really not receptive to this idea months ago anyways. And with all the uncertainty associated with the special legislation, this all brewed up on the last meeting we had with DHY on Friday, to the point where if you would ask me on that Friday, there's no way we were gonna go forward with anything like that for the fall. So, and Mark's been at all those meetings, as has been Rich.
I understand their board voted last night not to have a town meeting.
Well, there you go.
Harwich did not have a fall town meeting?
Right.
So what's the point?
Yeah, so if that's the case, that's news to me. So if that's the case, then I would say, you know, for us, it would allow us more time to worry about getting the legislation passed in Boston. But also, more significantly, all these things that I just mentioned to you as unknowns, we'll have a better likelihood to have confidence and known parts about that as we work through the winter on this to get it in line for potentially, if it's a good idea, an April annual town meeting. And by the way, this presupposes that DHY makes economic sense for the town of Yarmouth. I'm not necessarily convinced that it does, from what I've seen today.
Will you continue to work on the go-it-alone strategy?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's, we wanted to make sure, I didn't want to get into a huge, in-depth conversation tonight about this. We wanted to prepare you what was coming up in the next 30 days on this topic and bring you up to speed as to what we know right now.
But we're still gonna have the conversation with the CPC?
Yes.
And start to try to streamline some funding.
Because no matter what, that has to be part of the equation.
What about our policy in terms of new revenue with the rooms and taxes?
So that's a really good question. So some communities have taken a preemptive approach on that to already do Board of Selectmen language that would do a diversion on that. We kind of had a discussion a while back on that and said, well, why don't we wait and see what the revenues look like? Because there's time to address that in the future, because nobody really knows for sure what the revenues look like. So just out of, you know, and Rich can give you more detail on this, but I'm just gonna make up the numbers. Say we come up with $500,000 more in that revenue stream. We could just earmark that internally to say, hey, look, that's what showed up because of the short-term rentals. And you could put that into a stabilization fund at a later date if you wanted to.
We know what we budgeted based on old policy.
That's correct.
I mean, I think it should be a policy of our board going forward, so that staff...
I've always been under the, and I hear you, I just, I don't like to do an appropriation idea until you know what you got.
I guess the question would be, would the state, if, let's say that we took no action?
No action on DHY or...
On the designation of the extra funds coming in from the tax.
Yeah.
Let's say we took no action. Would the state then classify those funds as free cash? And I assume that would be...
So we can estimate those as part of our budget process if we want to do that.
No, I was just saying, would the state, having received, let's say it's half million dollars of funds, and then it's gonna go into the general fund, and so then the state would certify that half million as part of free cash?
Correct.
So the only opportunity we would have then would be at the following town meeting to transfer those funds to some sort of special fund. I mean, either way...
We'd have to do it either way.
We would have the chance to do that.
That's correct.
Whether it's a matter of setting a policy as a board or allocating free cash as part of our town meeting.
I think that becomes a critical component once you, like, prove what the revenues look like to be year over year, but especially once you go into a borrowing scenario. Because whatever we decide to borrow, we've got to have the financing tools in place to finance that, you know?
I guess the danger might be that, depending on timing, that... And I don't want to cast dispersions at this board, but half a million dollars sitting there is very tempting, you know?
But to your credit though, Mr. Holcomb, you guys, last year, when we were looking at what free cash looked like, you made a commitment to do a million dollars last year. And everybody was good with it, and we did that, and you got an extra million dollars sitting in the stabilization account, you know?
You know, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is that I think a policy statement is a little more formal action by the board.
It is.
And would avoid any potential future temptation, one way or the other, in that regard.
It's not allocating or, it's not superseding town meetings, allocation of any funds.
No.
It's a statement.
Right.
But once we know, like, I would feel better making that statement, giving you that advice, once we know what the cost recovery calculations are.
Right.
I mean, does it matter?
I think it does.
If you're gonna make a commitment to take that money and earmark it towards wastewater, regardless of what the number is, then that's what we should do.
But I don't know necessarily, you know, when you look at, like, what's our available levy capacity to do anything else, right? Last year, we were pretty close to the ceiling limit, you know? So I, so once you make a policy like that, that's going to forever, until it gets changed, drive future boards to go that, down that road. And I know in conversations, there's certain desire lines to do a little bit more with the budget here or there, but we need to honestly, be honest, we need levy capacity to do that. Now, let's say, and I'm just, this is a hypothetical. What if golf ends up showing a deficit situation again? Now, we got out of it with free cash. We've been turning some pretty good free cash numbers. All things seem to indicate that we'll be able to do that again. But that's certainly not something that you want to build something up against. So we'll know in about 30 or 45 days what the golf consultant believes as to the long-term, you know, in this case, five-year sustainability of golf operations are. They have remarked to us, and as did Keegan, that one of the problems, you know, ballparking this situation, the other communities around us, including Brewster and Dennis and Sandwich, use general fund revenues to prop up golf. Which is fine if you decided that maybe some percentage of that revenue from the short-term tax, because it is a tourism-generated situation, golf is for sure, because we know that strong revenues are directly related to daily players, and the daily players that come here are related to our tourism business. Then that's certainly a situation you might want to consider if we think that we need to carve out some levy capacity to keep golf going in a good direction.
I would not carve out any capacity of golf over fixing our water.
I understand. I'm just, those are the realities that I'm confronted with.
Make other hard decisions. But I think if we're gonna get serious about doing this without putting it on the taxes, then we need to get serious about doing it.
Well, that's the, and Tracy, I think you're right. And to me, that's exactly the type of flow between issues that I see us needing to avoid, you know, being tempted by X dollars, half million, whatever it is, of funding to say, okay, well, let's use $200,000 here for golf. And then we got, then now we're really in a bind, because now we've only got $300,000 left, or whatever proportion it is. And I understand, I understand the concerns, Dan, because, you know, certainly, you know, we're living out this situation with golf, and I think it's a good example of those kinds of issues. But, but I think, you know, I think our, I agree with Tracy. I think our board needs to take a position in terms of a policy statement.
If you'd like, on a future agenda, we can turn up some of the different policies that other towns have used around us and have a discussion on that. The other issue that I thought that you should see, because they're doing it on our behalf on this particular topic, is the Cape Cod Commission's report that goes to EPA on the progress of the 208 plan. It is, this is the draft they sent me. We do have till September 6th to make commentary to it. It does check us in the box as it relates to the DHY Community Partnership Plan as a strategy. And I think it's fair to say, over the last two and a half-plus years, we've put a lot of energy into that and put a fair amount of money into keeping the idea of that partnership alive. So my own take on this would be, as we know things today, it's reflective of our wastewater planning. But that's not to say that it couldn't change in the future. So I wanted to make sure you had a chance to have commentary on that ahead of time as well. And I also would let you know that there have been continued conversations with Barnstable on this topic. We had a meeting with them the other day. They're gonna unveil a pretty aggressive, multi-year, three-phase strategy to address significant expansion of their wastewater infrastructure over the next 20 years, which includes a, an interesting opportunity for Yarmouth that we need to talk about at a future meeting as it relates to effluent recharge for Barnstable, because essentially, they can't get to their build-out strategy without effluent recharge that we have potential availability for them. But our recharge is available at Buck Island Road if we do DHY. If we don't do DHY, then that was gonna be our own recharge area. So there's a lot of, it's like being on a seesaw. Some days, we're up, some days we're down, and I don't have a lot of answers yet, but I guarantee as the months go forward, we're gonna get clarity on most of those issues.
Yeah, I'd just like to raise a concern about, first of all, you know, without inferring any criticism of the town of Harwich, because I think they need to go through whatever process is required and at whatever timing is comfortable for their Board of Selectmen and their town voters. So, you know, without criticizing them in any way, I think we, as a town, need to be, continue at whatever pace is necessary to follow a plan that allows us to present a good plan to our voters and to prepare our voters with information so that they can vote. If, if at some point, the partnership between the three towns results in savings, then our voters would have the opportunity to vote on that in a way that would be to our benefit. But I think that we don't want to be in a position of constantly slowing down the process. And I think for this town meeting, it seems to me, we need to have some sort of presentation. And it may be just informational, but I think that we have an opportunity to put it before town meeting in some way. If it's not for a vote, then at least it's for an informational presentation that updates everybody on where we are.
We can certainly do that. And I think it's fair to say that our group that has met on a consistent monthly basis with the two other towns, we've been pretty square with the idea that this three-town partnership needs to be able to demonstrate a savings component to the town of Yarmouth. And we have been fair with them to say that we continue to calculate our own parallel track for a Yarmouth-only solution. So that's, so we're not slowing them down. And I think it's been fair to say that both Harwich and Yarmouth sides said at the last meeting, neither side was really comfortable where we were at on a special meeting article this fall. But certainly, we can produce something, and Rich has talked about putting an article up on that for at least the Wastewater Infrastructure Trust Fund, to at least get that established through town meeting in this fall. So then that's in the packet as well, and he gave you some primer material. So that would be fair to say that we want to, there's been progress on this topic. We're learning more about it, and we certainly could have an article that deals with the trust fund being established. There's other, I might say that the other one that came to me is, there's been some commentary that the Conservation Law Foundation is not particularly pleased with the status of pipes in the ground going through, like, right now. There's, you know, there's been a lot of talk about wastewater in a lot of the communities, but to date, short of the communities that have pipes in the ground, the one of most note is Orleans, which is interesting, because they put pipes in the ground related to their Route 28 project. And we're gonna be under the same scenario very shortly with Route 28 going into construction, where Orleans sunk the pipes in there in advance of the likelihood that they're going to have to solve this with a wastewater plant. So you drive through Orleans now, the roads all been dug up, it's been patched, and those pipes are in there waiting for a future sewer connection. So that apparently isn't really even enough demonstrated proof from some, from what we're hearing about the conservation law. So I don't, I don't subscribe to the idea that, you know, if this, if DHY doesn't get over the finish line in this fall, that somehow there's gonna be some magical legal action. There could, but I don't think that's the case. I think we're demonstrating due diligence and movement towards this idea. But what, but if, if we do stumble along the way with DHY, what's really gonna drive this debate sooner rather than later is Route 28, pipes in the ground for that situation.
I think you heard as other board members who were in attendance at the meeting of the coalition, that, you know, there's, you know, the Conservation Law Foundation is, is not showing a great deal of patience, for example, with the town of Barnstable with regard to a 50-year plan.
Right.
They don't, they don't like the timing of that. They, and, you know, and I, you know, I think that question has, you know, has to be a major concern for us as well.
No question. And that's why we're doing our own plan, you know, going down that route.
Right.
I just want to comment on this. One of the concerns we have is to be eligible for the SRF funding.
That's true.
And as you might recall, the plan that I presented on the cost recovery relies on a 0% financing, if not a subsidy. In order to be eligible for either of those, you have to, or for the SRF in general, you can't be under threat of lawsuits or regulatory action.
Interesting. The Conservation Law Foundation must know that.
I'd imagine so, yeah.
So that would kind of be contrary to their purposes if they got too aggressive. So, that would kind of be contrary to their purposes if they got too aggressive and did things that made the towns ineligible for funding so that they could get a solution.
Yeah, another, another reason I think we need to be in, in front of our taxpayers and voters on this is, at a new twist, I had some folks who are, have memberships in, in the Bass River Golf Course, and they're very concerned about, you know, what, what kind of plans might be underway for major construction, and what impact that might have on their ability to play at that course. So, you know, you know, you get a twist on how people might, might vote that is unrelated to the, the whole issue of wastewater.
Have a major impact if, if we do the three-town solution.
Three-town solution, yes.
Probably for at least a year.
Yeah.
Maybe two.
Yeah.
As if golf doesn't have enough problems.
Great.
Well, maybe that, you know, that issue gets avoided if the three-town solution doesn't prove to be viable.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we have a whole host of issues in that regard. What are you doing with, with town employees who are, who are working at the golf course for two, two years? You know, that's not an easy, that's not an easy question to address.
So, that was really all that we wanted to bring to your attention. It's a, it's a big plate, but, but, you know, we're going to try to piece it out in little pieces as we go forward, but there's, it's a lot of uncertainty at this point.
But it sounds like maybe we could do something with the funding mechanism at town meeting, and, and apart from informational presentation, there probably isn't much more we can do, right?
Very much so. Let's try.
If I can add something.
Sure. I think, I think it would be helpful to have a fair amount of internal discussion. I know there are meetings and discussions with the, the Community Preservation Committee and others about how this is going to work, and the timing of it, and how to sort of allow the work of the CPC to continue to operate, you know, in a, in a smooth manner, and affect their operations. So, I think it would be helpful to have a fairly robust discussion among committees and others on this, and to even be open to soliciting views from the, whether it's the Water Resources Advisory Committee or some of the other groups. So, and I would look to the town administrator to sort of lead that internal dialogue, so we can get some insight when it comes to us, and we can, when we vote on it, or act on it, at least we're somewhat informed about how the other committees and the town view this is working. So, I, I think that's important. I look at the September 19th meeting as informational, essentially, an update for all boards and groups. My hope is, is that we can get information out to a lot of folks that have an interest in this in Yarmouth, so that they can further understand what this tri-town project looks like. And also, I think we need to also internally have some discussion about the agreement. There's nothing preventing us at all from having some of the intense discussions on the agreement itself, the language, what's in it. I would like to see our board sort of get ahead of the curve, and make sure that whatever agreement we have now in draft form is a, is an agreement that this board is comfortable with. It would be helpful to know if there's an issue now.
Absolutely.
So, I know in the past, Rich, you did a great job doing individual briefings for members at, at a time that was convenient for them on the cost recovery plan. I think this is an appropriate item to maybe give some consideration to. I'd welcome a very focused, there's a lot of legalese and jargon and details in this, so, once it gets out in the public and we have more public discussion about it, at least we'll be able to respond to some of the questions that were likely to be given, imposed, so that we can help answer and promote some more dialogue on this discussion. I think that was one of the concerns that the Harwich selectmen had, is needing to have enough time to have a more robust dialogue on this proposed agreement and proposed partnership. And, I mean, the impediment isn't any fault of our own, it's just the legislative process is taking longer than we had thought, and you really can't take action on something without the legislator, legislature giving you approval to act on what it is you want to act on. So, without legislative approval, you really don't have the authority to do much of anything. So, that's kind of, sort of the, the, sort of the wildcard here. So, rather than make a gamble and sort of assume that you have the legal authority in time for town meeting, this is a more prudent move to wait until that authority is sufficiently in place. So, I think that makes sense. But I do think internally, I think it would be helpful for us to have more focused discussion on the two items, being the agreement, how it's structured, what it looks like, making sure that our board is sufficiently briefed and aware. Any questions or issues that we might have, we can flag them early. And then, obviously, having an internal discussion, and eventually coming back to us, on this, this, this fund that could be established in the fall. I do think if we're going to adjust anything, I think if we end up making an adjustment on this community preservation funds, I think ultimately, that's going to be on the, I think that has to be on the ballot.
Ballot question.
So, it'll be in, it'll be on the May ballot, but it might be helpful to take a stab at it now, get some voter support, and then ultimately put it on the ballot later. But at some point, there'd be something, have to be on the ballot in May. So, to some degree, if for some reason this board feels that it might be better to leave it till then, I mean, the fact is, is that the ballot question is, is part of this whole decision-making process anyway, so there's going to have to be some decision made in May. So, I think, I think those are, those are my thoughts. I think we should just use this time over the next several weeks to focus on these, these things, these particular items, and make sure that we're sufficiently briefed and aware. Like I said, this agreement, I think we should have a robust discussion on the agreement. I know we've had a subgroup that's been looking at it. It might be helpful to get the subgroup, you know, before the board, to share with us some thoughts, Mr. Chairman, on what, what, you know.
Well, just so you, what I was thinking we could do, if I could, the 10th, you'll meet with the CPC here. We'll, we'll try to adjust the agenda so it's shortened down a little bit, so you can have more time on that topic and be respectful of everybody's time. The 17th, though, I was planning on inviting, if you were amenable, to a workshop meeting on this topic, on the agreement, in advance of the 19th meeting, because I wanted to make sure that you were up to date as much as you can possibly be going into the 19th with the RAC and the Finance Committee, because there was two members, there was a member of the Finance Committee, Finance Chairman, and the RAC Chairman, that were part of the subcommittee group, including Selectmen Holcomb and Stone. So, the idea there would be that going into the 19th, when you meet the other two towns, you'd have that opportunity in a workshop meeting to dialogue out, which, it's been a while since we've looked at the agreement for sure, and Dave Young had offered to, to walk us through that, walking into the 19th meeting. So, that's certainly something that you can give it some thought, and I can make those invitations.
I, I support that plan, Mr. Chairman, having the 10th being a discussion on the CPC and this fund to, to underwrite clean water funding, and the 17th for an in-house discussion. I think that would be great.
17th is going to deal mostly with the agreement?
It would be a workshop on the agreement.
On the agreement, okay.
Be like a two-hour, come in, we could start it at five potentially, if you wanted to.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Sure.
Tracy, is it okay?
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a summary, a plain language summary of the DHY, explaining the DHY agreement, that I will be sending out to you, and I also be sending out to you a link, but if you're interested, or anybody watching tonight is interested, that there is a new website for the DHY Community Partnership. If you search that, you'll find it, and you can go on that website and see the, the draft agreement. I believe that summary is up there already, as well as the legislation and any, and other information. And just as far as background information, I have met with the CPC, their last meeting over the summer, and the Finance Committee, and will be following up with them with town administrator, as to the discussion of the potential repurposing of the surcharge.
Sorry, what would we be doing on the 17th?
The 17th would be a workshop meeting. We could start it at five.
Agreement.
On the agreement.
Three-town agreement.
Yeah, and prepping you for the 19th, because essentially, that's when everybody's going to see the agreement again, is on the 19th.
So, it's the 19th, now it's the 6th?
You know, the 19th is the three-town meeting over in Harwich.
Oh, for some reason, I got something on the 16th.
Is that Thursday?
It's a Thursday, I believe.
Did I get the wrong day?
Yeah.
I think the value of doing that is that if, let's say there's an issue in the agreement that we think want to flag with our fellow selectmen from other towns.
Oh, absolutely. We might as well be there. That's correct.
I mean, might as well do it. I hate to walk into the meeting on the 19th, and if there's an issue, not, not having to say.
Right there.
Yeah, what makes it difficult is when we hear feedback of a change, and we meet with the smaller group, not everybody hears it all at the same time, and it'd be nice to get it all out there in the, in the air.
Right.
Anything else on wastewater before we move on to goals? All right.
So, we gave a handout of the expanded version of the goals. I do know there was some commentary that came into us on the goals, and what we can do is for the task, we can update some of the tasks based on if you have a, if you want to see something added to the task sheets, and we're going to, going forward, once the goals get approved, then that's what the planning for the next year will be through the staff, and I would anticipate staff will, some staff's been really good at updating it, some not so much, but we're, we're going to work on that through September. So, it's been a bit of a learning curve. But the whole idea is that we communicate on that platform, you get to see it, the public gets to see the progress, and, and as we make progress on things, it gets updated
Norm, I think last time we were talking about goals, there was a lot of specifics that you wanted to talk about with respect to individual goals. I think it was Mark that suggested maybe we should wait and see the actual reports, and what was, what was written next to each particular goal on those reports. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that, and whether the concerns you have are satisfied or not.
Well, the specific question I had was, where, where was the wastewater planning in the, in, in the planning, or in, in the Invisio reports? And I'm trying to find it now in the details.
Okay.
Chairman, you know where it is?
Wastewater?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's under Goal 6.
Yeah.
Yeah, 31.
You'll see a number, a number of subactions related to it.
What goal was it, 6?
6, yeah.
So.
Is this splash pad in here somewhere?
I got an estimate on it. You're not going to be pleased with that.
So, that was clean water.
You mean an estimate? It's already been approved.
That was the engineering.
Estimate, schm estimate.
What was the detail on, on 6?
It's page 31 on, yeah. So, the committee, which has been done, legislation and funding strategies, a lot of this has come into completion now, so we'll be able to update the, the actions for the next report that comes out at the end of the week.
Okay, okay. The, the main categories of the breakdown were establish the committee, which was done, identify the legislation, which was done, we're just waiting on the Senate to approve it.
Right.
Identify funding strategies. We've already talked about some of those things, and we have future meetings planned to deal with CPC on that.
Management.
Right, so it goes from 6.4.1 to 6.4.3, I believe.
Yeah, I think the other key component that I, that's, I don't see identified is a, a community interaction.
There, there, I saw community involvement, community engagement, 6.1.2. 6.1.2.
Yeah, page 28.
Yeah, but is that, was that specific to wastewater?
Stormwater, Water Resources Advisory.
Achievement, stormwater discussion has been included with Water Resource Advisory Committee outreach programs. I think Norm was really talking about more community involvement with the waste, with the three-town wastewater project, or the parallel project of a Yarmouth-only project. The other, the other thing I think that should be there is the, the parallel plan of a Yarmouth-only solution if, for any reason, the three-town solution doesn't go.
Yeah, I, I, I can say that, I know Rich has put together a fairly robust program of public meetings and forums. There's also just FYI, I'm not, I think these, these, this is well-taken, but it might be worthwhile just reviewing what's actually going on, because there may be some more meat to this that can be added, Rich. The three-town committee has actually talked about having a person do, doing outreach, actually having an information coordinator. The town of Harwich hired Charlie Sumner, the former Brewster Town Administrator, to actually do outreach in the town of Harwich. So, there's been discussion, do we need to create the same capacity for outreach in a point of contact, if someone wants to, has a question, they're burning with a question, rather than just being directed to a website or a web link, is there a phone number, somebody that you can talk to and say, hey, can you explain to me in a little bit more detail how this tri-town or three-town system's going to work, if they have questions about the financing of it, the grants, whatever. So, I, I think there's some interest in doing that, particularly using some of the grant funds that we're securing to help build that capacity, but nothing's been decided yet, but we've talked about it. I don't know, Rich, if I've accurately characterized where things are at on that, but I think that's maybe just added to the meat of this particular item. Might be, might be helpful.
Yeah, there's several things we could add as far as an update, which I can get on, but certainly, we could, as, as we're considering this and moving on some of these goals, we could certainly add a subaction regarding evaluating construction options for wastewater, whether that's DHY or a Yarmouth-only solution.
I'm not so sure we need open state, open space as a specific goal, but golf, number 11, I guess, program, maybe, maybe we could.
Where are you, Tracy?
Just, I'm just talking about what we always focus on, which is the top 10 header, basically, that we need to focus on. So, I think that typically, what we've done in the past is approve the top 10 goals, and then Dan comes back to us with, with the plan of action underneath. So, I'd make a motion that we support goal number one, and these aren't in particular order necessarily, these are just our subjects, economic development, goal two, high-quality infrastructure, goal three, high-quality education, goal four, high-quality public safety programs, goal five, maintain sound fiscal health, goal six should say wastewater and clean water, goal seven should be exceptional customer service, goal eight, develop a strategy to address opioid addiction, goal nine, supports sustainability, and goal 10 should be programming for all residents. That's how I would see it. That would be memorable.
So, would you want golf to roll into 10?
Be kind of as part of either high-quality infrastructure or programming, high-quality programming, I don't think.
Customer service.
Yeah, we're working on just, yeah. No, I, I think to your point, like.
Like to keep it to the 10.
Under 10, Pat Armstrong is working on a, what I'd call a, for-all-ages programming portfolio, so we could roll it into 10.
So, what else is in open space? That includes land disposition, Yankee Village.
Land disposition is.
Open space is a, I'm not sure that's an appropriate description of what's in that detail. It includes.
How about, how about community development? Instead of open space? I mean, that could cover a lot of different kinds of land acquisition.
If there's things in there that need to go in other places, but as a goal of ours, I personally am not interested in focusing at this time on more open space. As a function of our board or a directive to Dan.
Well, I'm not saying I disagree with you, Tracy, but what I'm saying is the detailed action items, ten point one point one says develop land inventory. Ten point one point two says identify management needs and funding, you know, and it goes down through the land disposition policy. And then it also talks about Yankee Village, which is really in the affordable housing area.
Yankee Village was the open space acquisition of.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, alright, so that's a different, it's not the affordable housing then.
That's Yarmouth Garden, though, is part of that?
Okay, yep.
I think that, one of the reasons why it ends up being like that, there were many parts, if you're doing development or if we want to do something, you know, help a pre-existing entity expand here, we didn't have a way to dispose of town-owned property, right? So this became an economic tool. We're already got, I think I have on my desk now three applications to consider through that process you adopted.
We've done that, we've completed that.
We have completed that, that's right. So now we're actually taking in requests from the business community.
Solid economic development.
Well, now it could roll into economic development. That was a big lift to get a system in place to dispose of property appropriately. So it would be, once we can approve this with this feedback, we can update the grid accordingly.
And that's not to say we don't have open space committee and CPC that focuses on that, I just don't think it should be.
Well, I tend to think that the term open space actually misrepresents or mischaracterizes actually the work that's going on within number ten. It's really about improving our overall ability to manage land. I mean, all of these items are all about managing our inventory, managing our real estate, and then having in place a very thoughtful and deliberative process to make decisions going forward on it. So I don't have, I don't have a problem with it, but I would probably label it more land management. Our goal of improving the town's land management and disposition policies.
I mean, there's, I think, two points that are really critical there. One is we know we need to look at water resource areas to see if there's any additional land that needs to be acquired. The other one is with the bike trail project and making connections with the bike trail, looking out ahead, maybe there's something that needs to be acquired down the line there as well. So I agree with that. Commentary about land management would be probably a better way of phrasing that than as opposed to open space.
Yeah, and I wouldn't just assume that decisions with respect to land management would necessarily be more open space. I think that's prejudging an outcome. I think what we've done is we're creating a process so that we're making the best decisions on utilizing town property.
Alright, this is like a working document. What I'd like to see is if this isn't gonna be our goals, we've achieved that, we did it, we checked it, marked it off the box, we need to move on to things that we're gonna try to accomplish, I think. That's my point is, these aren't all things that we're working on, these are things that we want staff to focus on achieving in the next year.
Well, what we actually have to get doing is get this actually moving, because there's a lot, there's a lot here that has yet to be done under the category of land management, so.
But you're giving me ten items to put it all into, so that's what we'll do.
There you go, good.
So I think Selectman Post has a motion.
Where are you going to put the items that are in the category, goal number? Ten currently?
Tracy's motion is to keep one through nine, get rid of ten, and substitute in place of ten, programming for all residents.
Okay, and where are all the focus areas and subactions that are part of goal number ten going to go? Is this gonna evaporate?
No, there was a conversation about the land used to go to economic development.
Yeah, I don't think that's the right goal.
How about we instruct administration to find appropriate headings to put the remaining items under rather than beat this around for half an hour?
Sounds good to me.
Dan, you're smart enough to figure it out, alright?
I'm certainly fine with that. If you want to defer that action, we'll make it fit.
Sounds good.
Or even rename it, but it's not really an open space category.
Well, you wanted to get it down to ten.
I was trying, but that's fine, but if they think that it's important to have a section of its own, then I'm fine with that too, but it's not open space.
Right. I mean, Mark's heading of land management is a better name if you don't care about keeping ten and are okay with eleven, but I thought this whole discussion was predicated on narrowing it down to ten, so.
Than last year, but it's just.
So we are, we are at ten with Tracy's change.
Well, we're not accomplishing anything with this discussion.
No, but with Tracy's change, we are down to ten. And then we're gonna leave it to Dan to take the sub-action points from the old ten and figure out where they go. From there, right?
Yeah, we'll take on that challenge.
Alright. Anybody have anything else?
No.
Alright, so do we need a motion on that? I don't think we do, right, we're all in agreement?
So what are the goals?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, delete the existing ten and replace it with programming for all residents.
No, okay.
So.
Yeah, alright.
Put another way, I guess, economic development, high-quality infrastructure, high-quality education, high-quality public safety programs, maintain sound fiscal health, clean water, exceptional customer service.
I understand that those are categories, but that's not a goal. Saying economic development, do we want, what do we want there?
Well, that's where the tasks come into play, so what we do with the staff, based on the feedback we get, if economic development is a goal, so like one of the things, there's a program coming to our attention, it's on these opportunity zones, you've been briefed on those. The state has generally not been happy with the pace in which capital, private capital's been investing in communities that have opportunity zones, so they're coming to town, to Barnstable and Yarmouth to help work with us to launch an opportunity zone opportunity for private capital, get on Route 28. So an example of economic development full season would be redevelopment activities in the village centers that are identified as opportunity zones. And then we try to prospect out a business opportunity for those zones, and that's what we focus on, is trying to capture entities that would like to invest in the zones that we have established here in town using this partner that's offered this assistance. So that task becomes the elements that make economic development the topic, the tasks drive the topic. So if you're in agreement at a later date with the tasks, or you'd like to see some tasks added to the goal, then we certainly could do that as well.
Okay, I guess I'm accustomed to a different practice in industry.
No, I, you know what I think the issue might be, Norm, is the topics just too abbreviated. I mean, maybe there should be a word, like just support economic development, achieve economic development, or encourage economic development. A lot of these are very cryptic descriptions.
Well, I'm accustomed to very specific objectives, you know, when you establish a goal, unless you quantify what you want, you don't really create an expectation that is achievable. Just saying economic development, well, what do we want? Do we want one percent growth a year and in what? You know, you know, all I'm saying is that we've, we've got areas of interest, not goals. We're interested in economic development, we're interested in high-quality infrastructure, but we're not, we're not establishing goals for our town government, we're just saying we're interested in those areas. And, so. Yeah, I'm interested in these areas as well, but, but I think that we have to be, to crystallize our thinking on what the goals are in these areas. And that, that takes some real thought.
Anyone else? Okay, so Dan, you put something together for when we meet next time and we'll go from there.
Yeah, if, you know, I gotta go back to last year to the extent, the whole idea of going to this platform was to be able to share information between the board, within the departments, into the public, and this is the only way to do that. In the past, we used to use narrative to describe a goal, but then, since I've arrived, we were using narrative to describe what the goal was, which you'd had for many years, problems arose because you wanted to know what the status was towards those specific narratives, and it was very difficult to communicate that to you with some degree of regularity, so what we tried to do was move off of that concept to this concept. With the extended report that you have here, which you have access to, you can see the progress on all those individual points that have been pretty much the same goals over the years that the narratives used to provide, but now you can see, drill right down to the specific action we're taking to advance what you'd like us to do. So I guess, I'm trying to do this in such a way that satisfies not only you, but the public, but also we've invested into this platform, that the staff is using it to communicate with you. But if you'd like to go back, that I'll make a narrative on the goals, and, you know, it just becomes a little bit difficult for me to manage all the different requests that come this way, but I'm certainly willing to do whatever you'd like me to do, so.
I think in previous years, we also had a mission statement that went with our goals, and I think maybe that's helpful to continue. It says, "The mission of the town of Yarmouth is to provide high-quality, efficient, cost-effective municipal services to ensure the safety, education, and well-being of the community. The Board of Selectmen, as the chief policymakers of the town of Yarmouth, will support, the town administration will provide leadership to achieve the mission of the town. The Board will recommend budgets and adopt specific goals and objectives direct in the town administration, and will evaluate the performance of the town staff in achieving the goals and objectives."
So we can put a cover sheet on this to post it that way, and we can write a narrative on ten different statements that you'd like, and then put the subcategories underneath that.
That's how it's posted on our website now.
And that was with the cover sheet last year. But this was designed to be a tool to build off of year after year after year, and as you complete things, you move it off the list, and it would be consistent, no matter who the board was, who the administrative staff was, who the, this is the only way to ensure that vital information to move the town forward doesn't get siloed in someone's computer in today's day and age.
Right.
So this is a document, this is a platform, electronic platform that ensures that no matter who is here, those objectives keep moving forward.
Don't get my comments wrong, I'm not criticizing the work that's been done or the program that we've got, and the work that's been done on that program. All I'm saying is that in the statement of goals, we should be more specific. And, you know, so, and I don't know if that's necessary as part of Invisio, I think it's important for our board to have that statement, but, you know, if in Invisio, it's, you know, economic development is the quote-unquote goal, but our board specifically states more detail, I don't think our board needs to be absolutely tied to the descriptions that are here. You know, I think, but.
I'll produce a document for the next meeting that tries to satisfy that requirement.
Well, I think this document's terrific, and I think, I appreciate all the time and the energy and the work that goes into this, and I find it incredibly valuable as a tool for me to keep abreast of what's going on without it having to be a discussion item at a select board meeting, but it can be, it provides a resource for me to be updated. I don't think there's a need to significantly change it, I think it, I think it works well for what it does. I'm fine with keeping the numbers to ten and finding another place to put the land management stuff. If it fits in economic development, that's fine with me, but I, I don't have any, I have nothing but praise for this document and the process, Dan, and I'm anxious to see, let's move on.
Maybe, can I just say?
Is that a motion, Mark, to keep the format? Because I think we need to give staff some clear direction. I agree with you. I think, you know, this has evolved from a very simple list, and I don't want to go backwards.
And when we started, there was pages of goals that were very not efficient, but to Norm's point, perhaps a happy medium is something that doesn't evolve throughout the year, but in this little box where it says economic development, perhaps a little bit of a subsection of what we're, what we mean by that, increasing our commercial tax base, or whatever it is that we're trying to achieve. And it doesn't have to be fancy, just basically what it is that we're trying to.
I mean, to me, it means promote economic development, that that's a priority for the town of Yarmouth. It's pretty, it's pretty straightforward, it's just, this is a computer document, it's just a bullet there, but it's pretty obvious to me.
I don't know why it isn't understood. I mean, we're certainly not implying that we want to, you know, deter economic development, I mean.
We want the town to grow, we want it to prosper, we want this community thrive, you know?
I guess.
I don't need any flowery rhetoric, I think it's pretty clear to me. You know, in industry, goals would be very specific in terms of increase our market share by X percent in this calendar year, okay? So I'm trying to relate to that, and I know this is different. Now, in this particular case, I'll just use, you know, economic development as the example. The subcategories are bike path project, drive-in site, expand year-round economy, improve local permit process, affordable housing, land use initiatives, there's land use again, continuous development with the Yarmouth Chamber, and, yeah, that's it. And, you know, those are all good areas, but, you know, again, getting back to the question of how much emphasis do we as a board want to place on specific things? Well, I think that's where this discussion's all about. I think that's where we as a board, if we believe that there's an area of economic development that we shouldn't really.
really be focused on, or shouldn't be paying attention to, then I think we should, as a board, talk about it. And again, it's all about our giving guidance and direction to the departments, the department heads, and the people that are working. This, to me, this document makes sure that we're just all on the same page. And it provides periodic updates to showcase that indeed we are.
It's hard for him to measure the success, is I think what he's having a hard time with.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it's important-
That's what it comes-
There's a document I'll forward to you tomorrow that came to us. You know, this is kind of an interesting scenario. I give people the example of, on economic development, I've been involved in it in some shape or form, whether it was in private business, but mostly in government over the last 20 years. Of all the areas in the Commonwealth right now, with very little exception, there is some pretty significant, robust economic opportunity, which is, to Norm's point, the job generation, how many jobs in this particular sector, full-time, short, part-time. Well, this group that's coming to address this related to the opportunity zone. So the question is, there's this powerful tool that the federal government has adopted called opportunity zones that allows private investment to occur in such a way that there should be a significant return on investment if you can pull something off. And they've noticed that there hasn't been a lot cooking down here on Cape Cod. So they did kind of a, what I call a 15,000-foot view of, what are the impediments to economic development as a topic here? And it's kind of telling as it relates to looking yourself in the mirror and say, all right, we might desire that we would like a lot of these things, but the reality is, through whether it's parochialism, the zoning that we have, the town meeting for government, there's all these sorts of impediments that they've analyzed that have indicated that this is probably a reason why opportunity zone financing hasn't found a home here. That doesn't mean we're not trying. And we do have an interesting public-private partnership we've been trying to work on. But it was enough of an impediment that they called Barnstable and Yarmouth together and say, look, we're willing to help both you towns, and in this particular case, it was Hyannis Center in Yarmouth, Route 28 corridor, that we're going to try to work with you to help you understand what those challenges are to get this private capital in your community. So we're going to continue to go down that road and try to work those angles. And I'll share that with you, because I think it's a pretty good indication as to the challenges that governments here on the Cape face.
That's good. Thanks.
Looking forward to that.
All right. Anything further on goals for now?
Please, God, no.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Boarding committee actions. Mark?
Okay. A couple of appointments to make here. On the Conservation Commission, I'm recommending that we appoint Mr. Ed Hoops as a regular member of the Yarmouth Conservation Commission for a three-year term ending in June 2022.
So moved.
Second?
Question?
Yes.
Did Mr. Hoops recently resign, and now he's coming back on?
He, yeah, he-
Was for many years here, sir.
He's been on for quite some time, and he did have to resign for a period of time.
Okay.
But he's fully engaged, and-
So it's not a reappointment?
No, it's, he's, right, this is not a reappointment. No, there was a break in the action. So it would be just to appoint him to a term. We had another individual resign, and we accepted that resignation at our last meeting. So, and so, Tracy. Is that, you okay, Eric?
Yeah, I just, I thought I had read somewhere that it was a reappointment.
No, no, no. He had stepped down, and then he's coming back.
Oh, you know where I read it? Is because in the commission's memo to you dated August 14th-
That's what they stated.
It says to reappoint.
Well, he had served some number of years on that commission prior, so it might be just a poor use of the language there.
Yeah, it's not a reappointment, whereas his term was about to expire, and he wanted to take. This is a new appointment.
Correct, yeah.
Did we have any other candidates?
For this? No. Some of the committees, we have difficulties and challenges in filling slots, and that's another topic for another day. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Thank you. The next item deals with the Historical Commission. We have two appointments to make. One is Robert Heislop, to appoint Robert Heislop to the commission for a one-year term running through July 2020.
As an alternate?
As an alternate, yes. Thank you.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carrie's. The next item is Mr. Sam Lawrence as also an alternate to serve on the Historical Commission for a one-year term running through July 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie's. And that concludes my recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of minutes, March 26, 2018.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Obstained.
One abstention. Four in favor.
Is there some reason we didn't get a couple of sets of minutes?
Yeah, we've had some, with the summer holidays going on, some delay in personnel power that are working on this. So should get back to schedule once Labor Day's over.
Upcoming agenda review. We kind of went over a lot of that earlier-
Yes.
-with the wastewater discussion.
Yeah, we'll update that and get you a new copy. We updated it on Friday.
Couple special entertainment licenses, a DHY update, special time meeting warrant articles review, and Yarmouth permitting guide presentation. What's that permitting guide presentation?
The permitting guide is one of our goals. It's on the tasks as a goal. So that's going to be slid down, because I wanted to, the town staff has been working on it for a couple of years. It's finally finished in a way to help people understand the business activities and how you interact with the government. It's a good effort by the staff, but I didn't want to shortchange that presentation. So that'll move that down a little bit. As soon as we clear wastewater, you'll get that, so.
Happy anniversary.
We'll be at the Riverway in a few minutes there, right behind you.
But there's been active use of the portal and the document that supports permitting, so it's been a pretty good, pretty good effort.
He's well-trained. Okay, so you're taking that one off?
Yeah, I'm gonna slide that off, just for timely sake. I don't want to be, you know, I don't want to have you out all night, you know?
Do you anticipate anything else coming on, other than what we talked about today?
No, no, this'll pretty much be what it looks like, yeah.
Pretty much do it. All right.
Yeah. And now, we're still working on the handbook edits, so that might slide a little bit, too, so.
Yeah, we'll wait till Norm's not here to go forward with that.
I'm in favor of a few edits.
Which one?
Numbering the pages and-
Yeah, a table of contents.
A table of contents. Those are your edits.
No, you know, I mean, not to make a big thing, I look at that more as a resource thing, not something you read and memorize, but something you keep coming back to as the need arises.
Well, for me, as the chair of appointments, to me, it's, I've been waiting to get something done now for, ever since I got appointed, to do this in the beginning. I've been asking for this for a long time. I'd like to even have the current, the latest version at least adopted or accepted as an interim, something that I can hand out to people.
Yeah, we'll get that back on pretty soon, so we can take some action on it with those changes.
Yeah, I just, I think the sooner we get this resolved, the better. It's not rocket science.
Well, they may have to crest a crest while the handbook.
There you go.
He told me he took it to Dover already, so.
I'm sure he did. He probably got it approved in Dover already.
Already. Exactly.
All right, so we're good on that. Individual items. Mark, anything?
No, it's, like I said, I'd like to get this committee handbook thing resolved ASAP, so.
Okay. Tracy?
Not unless, Dan, are you gonna talk about the purple lighting?
Yeah, I can do that, sure. Unless you want to. Did she, no?
No, I just want to mention it. Thank you.
Eric?
Just a public service announcement. I want to remind bicycle riders that there, you do have stop signs at all intersections. Somebody's gonna get killed because bicycle riders think they have a right of way crossing the street, and they don't. So, again, that's my public service announcement.
Okay. Town administrator items.
Yes, on the consent agenda, if we could have a motion, there's a number of donations, please.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Carrie's. Updates, Dan?
Yeah, actually, I would like to give a big shout-out to YFD. I was notified earlier today that they received a $177,214 grant for new personal protective equipment through the federal government program that assists fire departments in this area. The official award will be given tomorrow to the fire department. Notice came via Senators Warren and Markey's office. But nice job-
Who brought the grant?
John Sawyer and the team at YFD. John reminded me today, I guess he left, he's four for four for his big grant, so, yeah, he's been doing a great job.
Protective, is that the turnout gear, or?
Turnout gear, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's huge for us, for sure, so.
It's a lot of money.
We'll let them know we appreciate all of it.
I certainly will, absolutely. They're doing a great job over there. There's also, just for informational item, apply now for Captain Gladcliff Affordable Housing Apartments. And as Tracy mentioned, overdose awareness, August 31st. If you have a purple light, install it. The town will be installing the lights as well. And I thought we had a really nice presentation last meeting by YSEC. I think it was very helpful for the community to hear at large what the safety net is available. And I think it's a sobering message that we all got, that this is an enormous problem. But the town of Yarmouth is setting the standard on the Cape as it relates to responding to that, so.
I thought that was a very good presentation, and I was, I was impressed with the complexity of how you have to approach this issue, and how calm those workers were. There was this level of acceptance by them that people have to want to take advantage of their services. And they were very, you know, calm and straightforward about them explaining what these resources and alternatives were to these potential patients. But in the last analysis, they can't force anything on anybody. You know, and that must be very frustrating for workers who know that people need help, just to kind of sit there and leave that ultimate decision to somebody who by definition is impaired, and have to accept whatever that decision is. I give them a lot of credit for their patience and their understanding and their, you know, their attitude, that we'll help the ones that we can help, you know, the ones that want to be helped. The other thing that I was, I did not realize, but, and I was quite taken aback by, was the correlation between the drug use and mental health issues, mental illnesses. And there was, I forget the percentage, but it was pretty darn high.
It was very high.
It was like in the 80s or something.
Very early on, when we had our, had a roundtable when this first started many years ago, and the sheriff and the district attorney came. And I think the sheriff talked about the correlation to the number of inmates that they have that have a substance abuse issue as well.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Very, very high.
And the mental health piece, so.
I remember years ago, when I was first starting to practice law, there was a guy named Frank Richards from Orleans, who handled a lot of the real heavy, heavyweight crimes, murders, rapes, arson's. And I went up to him, and I said, "Do you see much of a correlation between people who abuse substances, alcohol, drugs, and the people that you represent?" And, you know, I expected him to kind of ponder the question for a little while, and he didn't. He just turned around, he says, "All of them." He said, "People that don't do substances don't get in trouble." Now, I think his answer was a little tongue-in-cheek, but I found that in my experience, too. Most people that get involved in a lot of criminal activity have other issues in the background. You know, people that are successful, that are motivated, that have strong family support, that are accomplishing things, you don't see them in court, in criminal courts. You just don't. And I remember, in my earlier part of my career, when I did a lot of juvenile work, which I don't do now, because they're all parents, but I used to ask kids two questions when they came in to see me. And some of them had very, very serious crimes they were being charged with. I asked them how they were doing in school, and I asked them what kind of activities they belonged in. And I'm gonna tell you something, that the answer, 100% of the time, not 99.9, but always, was they're doing horrible in school, and they weren't involved in anything. And those are the kids that are at great risk.
That's true. And we do have to say for our district, and that Carol has been very strong in keeping the arts and the music and the sports programs. Obviously, I think a community center with more would be great, but in spite of all the difficulty budgeting in the past, she's always kept those opportunities first.
And music, and student government, and anything that's positive.
And all those programs, and I think it's extremely helpful. But what's interesting really is the age of use. When you look at the age of overdose, so, it's a long, it's a long history before typically they get there.
What were they saying, 30, 30-something was the average age?
Yeah, it's pretty old.
So.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to adjourn.
You have a second?
The second, Matt.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it's, we are adjourned at 8:00.